When you're ready.
You're good to go.
Okay, so I am gonna open the June 9th, 2020, meeting of the East Long Meadow Planning Board. Those in attendance that I can see are Jonathan Torsha, Tyde Richards, George Kingston, and myself, Russell Denver. Is Mr. Punderson there? Hearing none, so the four of us are in attendance. So I'm required by Mass General Law to ask if there's anyone who is recording the meeting, and if so, would you please state your name? I do understand that we're being recorded, and this will be placed on LCAT at a later date. So, the first item of business is the approval of the May 19th, 2020 minutes. I know they were forwarded to everyone earlier today. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Do I hear a second?
I will second that, George.
So we have a motion made and seconded the May 19th, 2020, meeting minutes. So by roll call, so Mr. Torsha?
Uh, yeah, yay.
Mr. Richards?
Yay.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
And Mr. Denver, yes. Mr. Richards, the first item of business, please.
SRPW 2020-14, East Point Foot and Ankle PC, request by applicant for site plan review waiver for a potty, uh, potty rick surgery practice at 250 North Main Street, Suite 102, Assessor's Parcel, 14-10-0, on 2.23 plus or minus acres site in a commercial zoning district. The applicant is Elizabeth Schwartz to Katy Lane, Enfield, Connecticut.
Is the applicant available? Mr. Quimby, do you know if the applicant's available?
Yep, pulling, pulling the applicant in now.
Thank you.
I am available.
Thank you. We're gonna wait to see if your picture shows up. Oh, there you are. Thanks for jo, thanks for joining us.
Thanks for having me.
So really what we'd like to first hear from you is a little bit about your credentials, a little bit about the business, what your operating hours are anticipated to be, the amount of traffic you might anticipate.
Okay, um, so I'm Elizabeth Schwartz. I am one of the co-owners and a physician at East Point Foot and Ankle. Myself and my partner, I've been out in the air for approximately six years, she's been out in the air for approximately three. We were previously working as part of Mercy and Trinity Health of New England Medical Group, but we recently have opened this practice to go out on our own. What kind of sets us apart from some of the other podiatrists or podiatric specialists in the areas, we are reconstructively trained. So we do both foot and ankle conditions, but also foot and ankle reconstructive surgery, and we see both PD and adult patients. Both of us approximately see about 20 to 25 patients a day, not including procedures or surgery days themselves.
And what do you anticipate your hours of operation to be?
Eight o'clock in the morning until five o'clock at night, Monday through Friday.
Do members of the planning board have any questions for the applicant?
Just to clarify, is that same building with the pediatric offices?
Yes.
Next to the, correct, okay.
Yes, pediatric on the bottom, the dental office on the top.
Mr. Kingston, did you have a question?
No, I said it's good use of the building.
Yep, okay. Any other questions, any other discussion? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
So move to approve?
Do I have a second? Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
So a motion been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, and we will do a roll call, Mr. Torsha?
Uh, yay.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
And myself, Mr. Denver, that's a yes. Congratulations, we look forward to you here in town.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, next item of business, Mr. Richards.
SRPW 2020-15, The Apple Place, request by applicant for site plan review waiver for the addition of two bathrooms in existing accessory structure at 540 Summers Road, Assessor's Par, Assessor's Parcel, ID 66-33-0, on a 15.43 plus or minus acre site in residential A zoning district. The applicant is Cynthia Norman in 540 Summers Road, East Long Meadow, Mass.
And Mr. Quimby, is the applicant available?
Uh, we have a Cindy, I'm guessing that's her.
Probably.
You guys hear us?
Uh, we can hear you, we cannot see you.
Should I click on start my video?
That would help, I think, yep.
Okay, we'll see.
There you go.
All right.
There's two, two familiar faces.
Yeah.
That I see at least three or four times a week.
So.
So I think.
Sorry.
No, you go ahead, so tell us about the project, and we'll go from there.
Yeah, so it was just, actually it said it was gonna be in an existing building, but we would be, it would be a new little shed that it would be in.
Okay, so where on the property would it be located? So you come in the main entrance, you've got the house on the right, you've got the, we'll call it ice cream bakery on the left, and you've got the barn. So where would it, where do you anticipate putting it?
So as you're heading out the exit, it'll be over kinda near the playground.
Okay.
Because the sewer pipe goes right through there, so that's easy access, and then we have easy access to water from the house.
Okay, all right.
There would be a handicapped, there would be one handicapped.
Yep.
And then one regular bathroom.
Okay. Do members of the planning board have a question for the applicants?
Uh, is it setback to the same setback or further than the house?
It's about, it's a little bit further than the house. So back from Summers Road, you mean, right?
Yes, back from Summers Road.
Oh yeah, it's, it's quite a bit back, maybe 100, 100 yards, maybe 80 yards.
Okay.
It's, 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 um, as soon as you make the corner to the exit, past our backyard where it's fenced in right there.
Yep.
We just passed there, so we have a little hook game, if you've seen that, it's right next to that.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure it's not gonna be closer to the road than the house, that's all.
No, definitely not.
Nope.
Any other, any other?
Do we have a plan or a sketch or anything?
Yes, it was included in the packet, um, I don't know if you have it there.
Yeah, I saw it.
You did, okay.
Yep, I did. Okay. Any other questions from members of the board? So do I hear a motion to approve?
So move, George.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
So there's been a ma, a motion made and seconded to approve this request, any discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call, Mr. Torsha?
Uh, yay.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
And myself, Russell Denver, is a yes. Thank you for doing improvements on the property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our patrons, thank you.
Yeah, I bet, thank you.
Take care.
Thanks very much.
Next item of business, Mr. Richards.
SR, SPRW 2020-16, Mary Crowley, LMHC, request by applicant for site plan review waiver for therapy service, clinical services, at 124 Shaker Road, Suite B, Assessor's ID 28A-3-69, on .47 plus or minus acre site in a business zoning district. The applicant, Mary Crowley, 124 Shaker Road, Suite B, East Long Meadow, Mass.
I think I see the applicant, there she is.
Hi, how are you guys doing?
Good, thank you. So what we like to hear from the applicants is something about, you know, tell us more about the business, some of your qualifications, hours of operation, amount of traffic that might be generated, that type of thing, so if you could start.
So I'm a licensed mental health counselor, it's gonna be a solo private practice, I'm gonna be inside of the Prusue Wellness Building, and I treat individuals from about age five up until elderly years. I do a lot of individual counseling, couples work, and family therapy, and I anticipate, you know, slowly building, but probably being there Monday to Saturday, from about 8:30 to about, probably 7:30 at night.
Okay.
And as far as traffic, I'd probably see anywhere from, you know, six to 10 clients a day.
Okay, all right. Do members of the planning board have any questions for the applicant?
Nope.
Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So move, George.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
So most, to approve this item, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call, so Mr. Torsha?
Nay, uh, yay, yay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Kingston? Mr. Kingston? Mr. Richards?
Yes.
And myself, Russell Denver, is a yes, so virtually we got three of the four of us at the meeting, so the, so the item passes, so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, so it's, it's unanimous. And we look, we look forward to having you here in town.
Me as well.
You gotta work for that last one.
Thank you. Uh, next item. All right, I've got a new public hearing case, site 2020-3, request by applicant for site plan review for a daycare business at 357A Shakers, Shaker Road, Assessor's ID 20-5-0, on half an acre, plus or minus site, industrial garden zoning district. The applicant is Melissa Scher, Scherach, I had struggled this last time too, I'm sorry, 165 Shaker Road, East Long Meadow, Mass. And I do have comments to read into the record. The first one would be from Bill and Joyce Donovan, and it says, "We have two safety concerns for a potential daycare center located at 357A Sha," oh, by the way, is the applicant on?
I'm here.
Yeah. Okay, oh, okay, that's where you.
Hi, everyone.
Hello. Uh, "We have two safety concerns for a potential daycare center located at 357A Shaker Road. We own the abutting property at 345-353 Shaker Road, and there are large delivery trucks, tow trucks, and automobiles leaving and entering the property on a daily basis. Our first concern is that of the safety of a child in the event he or she runs away from a teacher or parent onto our property with transport vehicles constantly entering and exiting our property. Our second safety concern deals with parking, in that it is imperative that daycare center staff and parents remain on the 357A property and not be allowed on the 345-353 property due to potential liability issues. Thank you for your consideration, sincerely, William and Joyce Donovan." And the next one is from the police department, and it says, "I have reviewed the proposal for following business, and they do not have any issues with the above proposal." Welcome back, Melissa.
Hi, lots changed in the regulations since I saw you, so some of this is a little different, too.
Okay, so why don't you walk us through what you have to date?
The regulations just came out yesterday.
Yeah.
And it's a nightmare, I don't know if you've looked at them or perused, a lot of day, quickly, it's crazy, a lot of daycares are closing, they can't afford to do the demands that Baker is putting upon them. The reason this new building is so much better for us than our old, the one that we're in currently, is we have a lot of small chopped up classrooms, and now you need to have much more open, free space for the kids. They've changed the ratios completely, so the funding is going to be very difficult, they've required higher staff ratios, and I think I said in the last meeting that I, why I wanted the drop off procedure, it's now mandatory at any of the centers, which is scary, because some of the centers, including the one we're in right now, if we don't get everything approved and ready to go into this new building, it's so dangerous to be doing pickup and drop off in the parking lot that I'm at. I'm in the old Smith Surveyors Building, across from Shaker Bowl, and that parking lot is tiny, and we're not allowed to, any parents in the building.
Yep.
So it's, it's a new normal and a new change for all of us, which is why I'm really hoping this can go through. The numbers that are on the site plan currently from the architect are definitely going to be, now, which is better in favor, we can still justify the building, but based on we're doing the staff and the ratios, it just doesn't make sense, so the classrooms will be smaller, and that's a much more open, as you can tell by the plan, that big, large room has very, very high ceilings and airflow, and that's everything they want, they want more of an open environment for the kids.
Yep.
They're not even allowing infants back into daycare, and we weren't gonna open with infants, because we were at a point where they all had kinda moved to toddler, so that works in our favor. As for the abutter of the Donovans, I completely understand what they're saying, and when I've stood in that parking lot and I've looked, I can understand their concerns, and everything that we addressed about that, that with this new property, the children will never be on that side of the building unless they're in their parents' automobile. They will never be there. There's an emergency exit that exits out that side, which we have to have, because it's an emergency exit, but it would only be used, obviously, if the building's on fire, and I think I'd rather burning building and watch the truck than keep them in the building. So that is the only reason they will ever be on that side. They are only ever exiting or entering a vehicle on the Arnold's side, the, the other side. Um, and they have a small walk from the door, the front door where they're dropped off at playtime, to the play area that's right at the back of the lot. They never come into the front, and they never go on that side of Donovan. I know that was something the police were concerned with, too, and once I had clarified that with them, they had no issues, they loved the turnaround, and how big it was, because it left plenty of room if there were backup.
So Bethany, if you can hear me, can you shake your head? Bethany? Are there, are there other items that we should be considering before we move forward with this proposal?
Sure, so an abutter raised a, an event with a hazardous waste spill that happened in the late.
97.
97, and it, I guess it took seven years for them to close the case, because they figured since it's in an industrial area, there wouldn't be a lot of people in the area based on the classic uses of industrial zoning districts. So the butter's concern was, now that it's being converted for a daycare facility, that those, the original report should be reviewed again. So I've contacted our DEP contact just to see what that looks like and who Melissa should be speaking with. I'm not entirely sure if it's something the town is responsible in researching, or if that's on Melissa as the tenant to figure out.
I would think it would be on the tenant and the landlord, or.
I'm, I'm unfortunately disappointed to say that I learned of this from Bethany.
Yeah.
And had no idea, and just printed out a 75-page report that I don't understand half of what it says. I did call my attorney and ask him, and he said the most important part of it is that it clearly states they found no significant risk.
Yep.
And the DEP will be the big issue, and what his advice to me was that if everything goes forward with, with all of you this evening, could I have a conditional approval based on the DEP?
Yep, so I was.
That was what he told me to ask, don't know if that's the right thing.
Yeah, okay. So this, before I open it to anyone, because it is a public hearing, do members of the board have any questions before I open it to the public?
I just want, I have one quick question. So everyone will be on this side of Arnold's meets, and not on the side of the building where Holly and Donovan Oil is.
Only if, only tied if they're in a car.
Yeah, yeah, right, of course, yeah, okay.
No one, there will be no foot traffic ever, the fire emergency plans are, are plans that we do with the children, getting them out for evacuation drills, nothing will occur on that side of the building.
George, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did, I'm wondering if, in addition to DEP, we should run this by the, the Health Department, I know Health has given its opinion already, but I don't know if they were aware of the hazardous waste issue.
I did email Amy, the Health Director, I haven't heard back from her yet on it, so I'll send her reply out to the board when I do hear back from her, as well as Melissa.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Just, just because I've never understood how any of this works, and in all my previous locations, I never had any of this, what is the concern? Is it an airborne, is it drinking water, what is the concern?
If I might answer that.
Please.
Chemical engineer by training and have done a bunch of this in industry, the concern is if soils are contaminated, they can off gas over a long period of time.
Oh.
And likewise, if, for some reason, the soils in the play area had been contaminated.
Yes.
You'd be concerned about the kids eating dirt.
What if I were to cover it with cement?
Well, again, I, I, that's why the report is important to understand, because what they do is they drill holes in the ground and, and test, and that defines the, the area of what they call the plume of, of the material.
Okay.
And they can, but by doing that kind of testing and monitoring wells, they can tell where the material was and where it has gone, and so it is possible to say, no, it never got onto that property, it never got onto the area where the kids are gonna be, that's fine, that's why I suggested that the Health Department might weigh in on it, because we have other areas in town that are a similar situation, and they're the ones who are involved with that.
Got it, thank you for that.
So I would like.
So they may require me to do more samples, is what they may require.
They may.
Is that something the landlord would have to do, or we share, or that's up to us?
That's something you're gonna have, you're gonna have to check with your, with your attorney.
My attorney, okay.
We're not gonna give you advice on that.
Got it, I just didn't know.
But I would like to open it to the public, and if there's any members of the public that wish to be heard on this matter, would you please indicate so? Mr. Quimby, do you see any? Anyone?
Uh, I don't see anybody raising their hand in the app, if they wanna be heard, just raise your hand in the app, and I can pull you into the meeting.
Okay, hearing none, I bring it back to the board for your consideration.
I'll make a, have, have we opened the public hearing?
Okay. Oh, we need to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second to close the public hearing?
I'll second that.
So, a motion made and seconded to close the public hearing, so a roll call vote, Mr. Torsha?
Yay.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
And myself, Mr. Denver, is a yes, so we've closed the public hearing, and so do I hear a motion one way or another on this matter?
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan contingent on a favorable response by the Health Department and by Department of Environmental Protection.
So do I, do I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
So a motion made and seconded to approve this item, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote, Mr. Torsha?
Yay.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
And myself, Mr. Denver, is a yes. So congratulations and good luck.
Thank you. Bethany, do you work with me from here to do the DEP, how, do, will you help me with that, or do I go do it?
Um, I'll let you know if I hear back from the Health Department, and they'll probably work with you directly from there.
And you contacted DEP?
Yes.
Okay, and then you'll hear from Health, okay, so you'll let me know.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, best of luck to you.
Thanks, bye.
So, the next item, Mr. Richards?
Uh, now I have other business, and the first item would be an update of the mixed use zoning.
So I, I anticipate Mrs. Richards to be here. Brian, did you see her, there she is. Marilyn?
I'm here.
Hi, how are you, thank you.
Good, I'm good.
Thank you.
Well, you're welcome, that was an amazing public hearing to listen to. Melissa, I've known in my youth, and she is, she just is spot on with everything she needs to know and do, so I'm glad that it went okay, and I hope it continues that way. Being said, um, Russ, did you get the email from Don Anderson?
I did, but do you wish to discuss that a little bit, or just give some flavor?
But I, I appreciate the fact that you read it, because a little bit is legalese, and I just, information, and so wherever you can pop in, I'd appreciate it.
Yep, will do.
Okay, um, Don Anderson, Chairman of the Planning Matters Subcommittee, had a phone conversation with, who is Special Counsel for the town, for the Town Council regarding land use issues, and he was the attorney that has been reviewing the document for the planned use, or rather, the mixed use district. And there were three items that we were struggling with, one had to do with the, the language in our current document for Homeowners Association, and based on Don's discussion with Attorney Pill, apparently we're gonna leave, the suggestion is to leave that language the way it is, a lot will depend on how a particular project plays out as to how many condos, or, or what the situation might be as to ownership, so that's all I, of information.
Yep.
The second piece had to do with affordable housing, and we have been, through our previous discussion, we settled on a 10% of affordable housing, inclusionary housing in the document to provide some opportunity for exiled residents. When COVID-19 hit, we suddenly started to think about the project that we've been envisioning, based on what we knew previously, was a concierge type of offering, where we were dealing with apartments, higher-end priced, luxury housing, less impact on young families and school-aged children, and that's why we went the route with some affordable housing to help meet our regional fair share, as far as that's concerned. With the change in COVID-19, we weren't sure if perhaps the project might change, or any project might change, and so we were looking at ways to set up some sort of protection for East Long Meadow, so that we wouldn't suddenly be hit with a, a very large-scale affordable housing project that would potentially impact numbers of families, and then our school system would be dealing with, you know, some issues there, as well as other town services. Apparently with discussion with Michael Pill, he suggested that there'd be a minimum and maximum number as to affordable, 10% minimum, 20% maximum, which would give a window and a limit, and so, you know, that was one piece of that discussion. The other piece was that Attorney Pill has suggested that there be a limit to the number of bedrooms in the apartments, you know, no more than two bedrooms per apartment, and obviously, all of this information that I'm giving you this evening just came to me today, I just reviewed it, the committee has not yet discussed it, I'm not sure where it will go from there, but this is what Attorney Pill had suggested, that we might consider a one-to-two-bedroom limit with apartments, rather than three bedrooms or four bedrooms. rather than three bedrooms or four bedrooms. So, which would imply larger families rather than couples or young professionals. Um, the other piece is the host community agreement. And this piece is the piece that I am the least comfortable with simply because I have not had a chance to review the case law that's, that accompanied this statement. But there is some discussion that took place between Attorney Pill and Don Anderson, also Attorney Don Anderson, regarding, um, contract zoning. And that there appears to be, um, a possibility that I agree with this because I really haven't thought it through. But that, um, within the host community agreement, there would be incorporated contract zoning, which would, um, permit the town or to, or require the town provide or approve the zone change until the terms and agreement of a proposal are worked out. Now, as a former planning board member, I can look at that and say, wow, that's huge. Because if you're looking to carve out the terms in an agreement before you even have the zone change, that's a risk that a developer would have to take. And so there's got to be some discussion with that.
Yeah.
So that's where we're at. Um, that tells me, um, in fact, based on the email from um, Attorney Anderson, we are looking to try to get a meeting together, um, of the, um, planning matter subcommittee to take up these issues. We could certainly let you know when we're gonna meet, um, because we'd welcome you to join the discussion. Um, however, um, that's the status for today.
I appreciate it very much. Do members of the planning board have any questions for Marilyn?
I do. When do we expect all this to be done?
Is that your only question, Ty? You, you've come to our meetings, you know how detailed they are, you know how, um, this is a, this is a leap of faith for our community in terms of the kind of project that we're dealing with. It's gotten much more involved than I ever thought it would, just based on what I told you just now. Um, where the committee's gonna meet and hopefully we can come to a decision as to where to go with these particular pieces of information. And then I'll let you know. Last week I thought, or last meeting, I thought we could have been doing something by the end of this month. But now some of these issues are far more complicated than I expected they would be.
Other members of the board have questions for Marilyn?
Marilyn.
I do not.
Thank you for all the work you guys have been doing, um, you know, getting it really detail oriented. Has Attorney Pill looked into, um, this, this idea of, uh, having this maximum cap of affordable housing? Do, do you know possibly if other communities have done this in their mixed use zoning or when other communities have approved these type of bylaws?
Okay, first of all, um, this is awkward for me because I was not the one that had the conversation with Attorney Pill. Um, Don Anderson did. I tried to get him to come to the meeting tonight. Um, because I think it would have been more helpful for him to answer this question. That being said, um, there is a statement that, um, gen- um, general laws, chapter forty B, which is your, um, housing, um, law in terms of affordable housing. It requires a, only a minimum of twenty percent. And so, um, I don't know that this would be out of the ordinary for a project such as ours. The whole idea, the, the whole focus was to meet our regional fair share. We're not looking to create several of these developments throughout our community to over, you know, impact on our general, you know, ability of, of, you know, in town tip. I'm sorry, in terms of the town services. So, um, it's, I think the twenty percent will be reasonable. Is that, does that help?
Yeah, no, I, I thought that was a good, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Sorry for the mumbling.
Any other questions for Marilyn? Well, Marilyn, we do greatly appreciate your updates. Um, this is obviously, if this comes to fruition, it would be a a very big project for the town and so I know it's important for it and to the town council and to the residents at large. So thank you.
And I think you need to know too that, um, there was some concern that the, that the proposed project that we've heard about may not move forward based on COVID nineteen and it was only just within the last few days that we received confirmation or that Don Anderson received confirmation that yes, they were still looking to move forward, but what they're considering could be anyone's guess.
Okay. So thank you. Um, i- if, if I could ask, so in a couple of, so we're gonna discuss, uh, the master plan and we're gonna have a discussion of a solar bylaw. I know those are two things, uh, that are near and dear to you. So I don't know if you wanna stay on the, stay on the call uh, and maybe provide some perspective as a town council member when we get to those items, but
No, certainly.
Okay.
I was gonna stay in it, so.
Okay, so item, item number six, Mr. Richards.
Discussion of master plan.
So George, I'm gonna ask you to, uh, you've been most active on this since our last meeting. Perhaps you could fill in the members of what you have been up to on this item.
Yeah, definitely. Um, what, what happened was, um, we are now a qualified, have a qualified municipal vulnerability planning plan. So a preparedness plan, I should say. And as a result, we're eligible to, to apply for M V P grants. And M V P grants can be used to, um, fund doing a master plan. So, um, Mary McNally and Bethany have decided that, uh, they're gonna try to apply uh, for, in this grant round, the deadline being June eighteenth for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, uh, actually a hundred and twelve thousand dollar grant with the town kicking in thirty some odd thousand in, uh, in kind um, to do a master plan, to hire a consultant, the whole deal. Um, because we, we're not gonna get it in the capital plan. That, that's been made pretty clear. So Bethany has been working diligently to, uh, write the grant proposal and I have been, uh, co- coordinating with her on that and providing some additional verbiage and so on. Um, it's pretty much come together and it looks pretty good. Uh, we don't know what our chances are. It depends on how much money the state has and, and where we, where we fall in the rankings. But it's a good shot at it and if we get it, then we can move forward rapidly. If not, we'd have to wait for next year's grant.
So that is actually also relates to item number ten. The M V P action grants, letter of support. So Bethany, I know that you had forwarded that to everyone for their, for their review.
Yeah.
So do you, do you need a vote of the planning board to authorize, uh, the sending of that letter?
No, we need.
Or signature?
George?
Yeah, we, we need a vote of the planning board to support, uh, the grant, uh, through the letter that's been written.
Okay.
So I'm, I'll make a motion to, uh, to support the grant through the letter that's been, been written and have you send it.
Do I hear a second on that item?
I'll second it.
So a motion made and seconded and any discussion and Marilyn, would you like to jump in? Any discussion? You're all set?
The, the council, um, heard about it, um, earlier this afternoon from Mary's report. And, um, we're, we're on board with supporting this endeavor. I think it's a great opportunity.
Okay.
It works.
Great, thank you. So, uh, motion made and seconded, um, by roll call. Mr. Torsia?
Yay.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
And myself, Mr. Denver is a yes. So, thank you. Uh, next item is discussion, item number seven, Mr. Richards.
Uh, discussion of solar bylaw.
So, uh, Bethany, maybe you can, uh, jump in on this. So, uh, it is my understanding, it's my understanding and Marilyn, please, uh, help me, uh, with this. But I received a, um, an email from Ralph Page that they will be putting before the town council an item for this, for solar moratorium. Uh, is that correct?
What I can tell you is that Ralph, um, drafted a solar bylaw based on the information from your public hearing. And, um, he sent it off to me. I proofed it. I picked up a few typos. I sent it back to him. Um, as, as bylaws go, I, um, I'm not sure that we, I mean, I'm struggling with this because I thought that the bylaw would come from the planning board to the council and that we were working on this just to help you guys out. So officially, that's as much as I know, Russ, um, that the bylaw has been crafted.
Okay.
And I sent it back to Ralph and Ralph was not at the meeting this afternoon.
Okay.
But it's, it's there. It's, it's ready. I don't, I don't know why it doesn't speak on the next agenda for that or we have to public.
And obviously this goes back to our discussion last fall when we felt that we were going to try to pass it, a solar moratorium for at least one
Second.
Yeah, for at least one year.
Right.
Uh, somehow it got lost in wherever it got lost. Um, so we're trying to write that, uh, correctly. Um, Mary McNally has forwarded to me, uh, at least one surrounding towns, um, bylaw that was approved by the attorney general. Um, I gave her back my comments on that, um, just as a review. Um, so there, there's some activity moving with this and obviously, you know, we're still, there's still a court case, uh, involving, you know, the, the prop, the property, um, that we acted on last fall. Uh, so there's still some kind of moving pieces, uh, related to all that. But I just really wanted to kind of tell you that there's some moving, some moving pieces on all of this and we kind of hope to bring it all together within the next meeting or so.
And I, and I agree with you. Um, I think it's coming together. As I said previously, I don't know how we got lost in that journey between October twenty-second and now with respect to the, um, the temporary bylaw that addresses the moratorium. But that being said, um, as far as I lost you. Let's see.
Well, I can hear you.
Um, Ryan, can you bring me back?
You're, you're there.
You're there.
You're there.
Well, I don't see you. Um, a phone call came in. That's why, you know, my computer bounced off. They thought the call was more important.
Click back to meeting. You should see it. Uh, orange button says click back to meeting.
Uh, look here. Okay, let's see.
I don't think that was the right button.
All right. Well, we'll wait one minute and see if she comes back.
While we're wait, waiting, Ryan, my, my screen keeps freezing up. Is there anything I should be doing differently?
Uh, you have the wifi issues where you are?
I have what?
Wifi issues?
No, I don't have wifi issues that I know of. It keeps telling my internet connection is unstable, which I'm not sure what that means.
Uh, yeah, it usually means you're not close enough to the router or something like that.
Okay.
Hi Marilyn, you're back.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, the, um, at your last meeting, you were discussing the solar bylaw itself somewhat and Pete Punderson had mentioned that he felt that there was some certain stuff within the existing bylaw that he felt should be left alone. And I know George was involved back when it was created and I, and I tend to support that. Um, the question raised whether, um, residential zone restriction or prohibition of ground mount um, was fair. It met the statute. So that would be the area that I would consider looking at instead of rewriting the whole thing. I know that Ralph had given the planning board the copy of the bylaw from Hampton. Now, I'm not sure if that's the bylaw that, that you received.
It, it was.
And I have not seen that bylaw. But, um, you know, you know, there are a lot of people that are willing to help out with this. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable that we will come to some kind of an agreement with respect to the bylaw and also the solar moratorium.
Great, thank you.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Uh, hearing none, item eight. Um, so it is my understanding that, um, we do need to elect a chair, vice chair clerk for the period of July one, twenty twenty through June thirty to be effective, uh, July one. I, oh, take that vote this evening because I understand that we will be meeting on June thirtieth. So what's the pleasure of the board?
I was going to, uh, make two recommendations, but I can make them at the next meeting.
Well, uh, why don't you tell us what your recommendations are?
My recommendation would be for you to remain the chairman and me to remain the clerk. That way I don't have to worry about being nominated for vice, I've made up for vice, uh, chairman.
Well, what's the, what's board wanna do? Do you wanna vote this evening or do you wanna wait till June thirtieth?
I think we oughta wait till June thirtieth and hope that Mr. Punderson shows up so that we can, you know, know his, his desires, whether he's an officer in some way.
Okay. So Bethany, would you please put this on the, uh, June thirtieth agenda?
Yep.
And, uh, so are we confirming that we will be meeting on June thirtieth?
Uh, yes, and then your July, the first meeting in July, I believe is July seventh. Um, confirming that you are not holding a meeting on that date.
So that is the week of, uh, July fourth. I know Mr. Richards had said he'd be out of town. I would be out of town. Um, it is, the, the last three years that I've been on the planning board, we have not met, uh, that week. Um, is it the pleasure of the board that we not meet that, uh, on July seventh and we just meet on the third Tuesday of July?
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So, um, any discussion? So mo- seconded and there's being no discussion. All, well, roll call again. Jonathan Torsia?
Yeah.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
And myself, Mr. Denver is a yes. Okay. Uh, Bethany, any other items before the planning board tonight?
No.
So I have a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
So I'm a second?
I'll second that.
All right, I'm gonna have to roll call one last time. Mr. Torsia?
Yeah.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
And myself, Mr. Denver is a yes. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
You too.
Take care.